I'm going to call the meeting to order at 6:01. Good evening, everyone. Welcome. Agenda review and dispositions. Is there anything to add?
I do not have anything to add.
Okay, dokie. Minutes of October 4th, 2021. Can I make the motion if they accept the minutes?
I'll second.
All in favor?
I do have an amendment. Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, no kidding?
I do have an amendment.
Oh, yes.
In this session, on the, under discussion items, under the COVID update, COVID update A, I just would like to, the minutes to reflect the fact that I did second Fran's motion so that it was, it was on the table and being discussed as, as a seconded motion.
Would you pass? That is a good question.
Who else had with that, Jenny?
Thank you, Jenny.
Amy, may I suggest roll call votes tonight if we have two on Zoom?
Sure.
Just to be clear.
Absolutely. So Frank and Mike, Fran made a motion and Phil seconded the motion with the amendment that, on page number four, under a COVID update that Phil did second Fran's original motion, so he take a, make a roll call vote on the minutes.
With the changes.
With the changes. So all in favor of those. Frank?
Is Frank on?
You're muted, I think, Frank.
Thank you, yes.
Okay, Mike?
I'm in favor.
Okay. Fran?
Hi.
Phil?
Hi.
Thank you. All right. Privilege of the floor, number one. Welcome. Hi, Jenny.
Hi.
Welcome, red pants, yes.
Yes.
Hi, I am Jenny Chivo. I live in Plymouth. I have three very short things. I had it written down, but I didn't print it because that's how I rule. So first, it's actually in reference to last month's meeting. I just wanted to bring up again Rachel's challenge. The evening performance that the parents could come to was incredibly powerful. And I just wanted to thank Mr. McDonald and the administration for making that happen because it was, it was wonderful. Second, I would, they're very short things, I promise.
No, that's fine.
I would just like to say as a addend to the COVID concept that since we're not going to stay fully masked unless we get into a cluster in our school, that we increase it to a cluster or worse at any SAU 48 school. Since there is so much intermingling between families and friends and high school and elementary school, that that can be a way to increase masking without it being all of the time. That is just a suggestion, something to think about because there are so many parents that could not come to tonight's meeting, but who are still interested in increased masking. Third, which is again something that is just for your bruisal, is the fact that we have had two privileges of the floor for a very long time on our agenda, and recently it changed. And it feels that all of a sudden, we have more people coming to meetings and wanting to talk, and then we lost a privilege of the floor. And I would just wonder if anyone on the board or yourself could explain the reason for that.
Yeah, so I can speak to that. We chose to take away the second privilege of the floor based on what was happening during the first meeting, only because it was gonna be the same message from before. So we decided that instead of having the same message be said once and then having the same message be said twice, we would just eliminate the second one because it's gonna just reiterate again what you guys are speaking about and privilege of the floor number one. So that's the reason honestly behind it.
But I just, Frank, why was there two?
So it's just, some have two, some have one. As you know, every district in the SAU functions a little differently. It really, this year, brought up the fact that many boards looked at it and said, why do we have two? And I said, it's been like that for 20 years.
I can see that people might have questions or want to discuss something that we discuss in the principals report or discussion items.
Mm-hmm.
I mean.
Yeah, boards have had different views on that. Some have always had one, and it's at a different spot in the agenda. Some have two. Some have decided to eliminate one of them just for some savings and getting to the business part of the agenda. And it's for different reasons. You know, it came up this, this year because of, you know, I think statewide, there's been all kinds of issues going on at board level. So I think they're just trying to be managed a little bit easier. But I think, you know, it's just some input that they've been taking from the New Hampshire School Boards Association, too.
Could I give a follow-up to that?
Yeah.
I will say that it felt very sudden and uncomfortable that it was all of a sudden gone.
Okay.
As somebody who often replies secondly to other things, especially the stuff that Tanya talks about, I would suggest if you can, which is hard to control during a school board meeting, making it so that if possible, lots of ifs, you cannot bring up what was talked about in the first one. You know, the privilege of the floor, let's say, for example, COVID conversation would be brought up then, but if there is a new topic to be brought up, it could be brought up in the second one. Sort of like how in the town meetings, you're only allowed to bring up what took place during the town meeting. You can't bring up other things, only things that were talked about separate, that were not talked about in the first meeting.
Okay.
Because for me, I had to wait a whole month to talk about Rachel's challenge. I thought it was important enough to bring up. For me, that's just my two cents, and I just wanted to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take that into consideration for next meeting because I don't disagree with you. So, you know, it's easy to put back in. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? No?
Anyone online?
Anyone online?
Please raise your hand or unmute yourself.
Nope.
No, I see nothing. All right, thank you. Thanks, Jenny. All right, principals report.
So hello. We, I wanted to give a little more detailed picture of enrollment to the board this evening. Currently, in our kindergarten, we have 31 students in the entire grade. In our first grade, we have 29 students. In our second grade, we have 43. In third, we also have 43. In fourth grade, we have 30 students. In fifth grade, we have 48. In sixth grade, we have 45. In seventh grade, we have 47. And in eighth grade, we have 50. That's for a total enrollment of 366 students. I thought it was important as we approached the budget that I let you know about the class sizes. It's unclear to me if that is based on a population dip, change in demographics, or if it's continuing lots of enrollment during COVID and pandemic. Those are significantly smaller classes than we have historically had at Plymouth Elementary School. Want to talk a little bit about this month's, this month's theme, which we started this morning. The theme of the month is courage. We're talking about doing something that you're worried or scared about and just doing it anyways, and what the difference between courage and bravery. And one of the reasons that we chose this theme for the month of November is because of Veterans Day, which is coming up. And want to let you know about what's going on in the area of curriculum instruction and assessment. Teachers are doing an excellent job this year with their Into Math implementation and pacing. You know, they got used to the program last year, and our students overall did very well on our, on our beginning of the year testings through Into Math. So, you know, we're a year into that program and they seem to be adapting to it. Next week, we have PSATs for our eighth graders. So that's exciting for the eighth graders. Want to let you know that we followed up our summer work with Polly Bath since our last meeting. She came to for a professional development day, and the faculty worked very hard that day on identifying what our core values are for the building. And we're, we're using also the work that the seventh and eighth graders did on the first day of school, and we will be presenting to the board next month a full picture of what the students and the faculty identified as core values. And then launching some work with the entire student body in January, on how we are going to raise awareness for those values and help kids grow into fully having the skills and dispositions associated with those core values. Want to do some student shout-outs to, first of all, to the Yalta and Student Council students for helping with the pep rally that we had last week. Want to recognize the K O winners, the, from the intermediate wing from this past month. So Brooke Doolittle Olsen in fifth grade, Andrew Valles Babylonia, and Zomi Artizoni all received K O awards last week. Two of them are new to our community and have been really wonderful additions to our community. Also want to celebrate Caleb Dutil. He presented his poetry at PES News last week. It was a rap, it was fantastic. And want to thank Brooke Wakefield and her mom for organizing the eighth grade ornament sales for the eighth grade fundraiser. Under teachers and staff, I'd like to shout, do a shout-out for Michelle Praliano for presenting some work on the science of reading with myself and Kenneth Logan from PSU. The three of us presented about current research on the science of reading and how to use, use that research in our classrooms. We'll be using that research as we look at our literacy plan and literacy programming over the course of this school year, so it's very timely.
Tony, can I ask you a question? Where did you present that information?
To the faculty during the faculty meeting in October.
Okay.
We're also then now going to go and present at Plymouth State. So we're now going to do the same thing, kind of build that relationship with the young student teachers. Under for parents and PTAs, like to thank the PTA for their donations and volunteering at the Halloween Parade. Second annual PES Halloween Parade was a success, and all of the candy donation was well appreciated by the students. Please stay tuned, parents. The end of this week, we will be sending out the winter program paperwork via paper, not, not online. And we will really need parent chaperones in order to run that program. We are looking at running where? We are going to be at Waterville Valley for alpine skiing and for Nordic skiing. We are going to be at Waterville Estates for swimming, which is new for Plymouth Elementary School. We are going to be at Top Gun Gymnastics for gymnastics and White Mountain Karate for karate. And we're going to be at this ice arena at PSU for ice skating. We are going to have an ice fishing, snow shelter building with a DAP activity. And I think that's it. That's all I've.
They've expanded winter programs.
Awesome. I'm really excited about that program, and, but we will definitely need adults to help make that happen. We'd love even alumni to help. So, under food service, I want to let you know, we did receive the fruits and veggie grant. We're working to have that be a consistent program here to make sure that the fruits and veggies are available as often as possible in the afternoon. Under technology, I want you to know that the overhead projectors that we had ordered for the primary wing have shipped. Stay tuned. Most things that shipped are taking a little while to get in, but at least they've shipped. That's the good news. Under facilities, the glass has come in here at the library to help a little bit with the sound, and the new cabinets in the main office have gone in. The building continues to be very clean, so I'd like to thank the custodial staff for that. And the air handlers, the filters are, are being replaced quarterly. So we think our air quality is continuing to be very, very good. Under recent events, the Polly Bath PD Day went very well. I spoke to them already. The Halloween Parade, parties, and pep rally was fantastic. Big thank you to Parks and Rec for organizing the treat bags, and Police Department, Fire Department, SAU staff, and PRHS for providing the candy and the stops along the parade, and the middle school and their middle school teachers who provided candy as well. Today, we hosted the one, two, three, four, five, six vaccination clinic. We had, I think, over 150 or over 200, it's unclear to us right now, but we had lots of people today here partake in our, in the vaccination van. That's a success. Tomorrow, we have parent-teacher conferences. There is no school at Plymouth Elementary School tomorrow for parent-teacher conferences. Reminder about that for everyone. Pete, as I said, PSAT testing is next week. And we will have a Veterans Day on our, or ceremony during PES News on the day before Veterans Day. And on November 15th, we'll have another mobile vaccination clinic here from 3:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon. And it is our expectation that at that point, there will be boost doses for the five to 11-year-olds. That's our biggest hope. That's, we thought maybe, we, our first thought when we booked today was that maybe they'd be available today, but we had to book it quite a while ago. And then last week, we said, oh, let's do another one. So now we're at November 15th, and we will probably need a follow-up as well. So we will continue to be offering the mobile vaccination clinics. We had many community members partake today. It was not students, in fact, I mean, there were some, a few students and a couple of staff members from here, but it was mostly people just from the community who knew about the event, so very happy to offer that.
Do we happen to know if it was, I guess there's no way for us to know if this was people that were eligible for a booster, getting a booster, or first-time vaccination?
I stood, I was out there today, and, and I kind of promoted it as that because there is no more funding for vaccination clinics that we held, like the teacher clinics and the student clinics that we held in the spring. There's, the state did not accept the funding for additional clinics through the Public Health Network.
Right.
So the vaccine van is our only option right now. So we figured, hey, let's roll the dice and get them out here. We thought the five through 11-year-olds would be approved. We had a longer line than expected today, which I, I think was surprising, and I'd say more than 95% of today's doses were booster shots. So they had all three available for anybody, and it's open to the public, and, and a lot of our senior citizens took advantage of today's clinic, which was great to see.
Good.
So the 15th is a Monday.
Mm-hmm.
So are, for kids, are, will their parents come here and take them out and do it?
So.
It's 3:30 to 5:30 in the afternoon.
Fran, it's, it's again, public, so anybody, so we even had folks from Newfoundland show up today. We just kind of call in the van, they run it, and we just host the site.
Okay.
But the parents have to be with, with under 18. And then we'll.
And you need your vaccination card.
For boosters.
If you're gonna get a booster, bring your vaccination card. You can't get the booster without.
Then there's no sign-up schedule. It's just first come, first served.
Great.
I'll speak to availability of vaccines a little bit more later on.
Is that all you had?
That's all I have.
All right, and before Kelly, before I pass it over to you, I just wanted to say thank you to Jess Dutil in the Office of Community Impact at PSU. They had a Choose Love event, where Scarlett Lewis, who created Jesse Lewis' Choose Love movement, they had a whole day. She spoke about the movement, and it was really powerful and fantastic. Tanya and Caleb were also there, and I would like to, you know, bring it up for future as a program that PSU implements into their curriculum. I think it's really powerful, and I really enjoyed it. So I just wanted to say thank you to the Office of Community Impact for hosting that and inviting me, and I thought it was really great. So, thank you. Right to you.
Thanks. Okay, well, our fall sports season is officially completed, and with temperatures dropping tonight, I think probably we're, we're glad. All of our teams did a great job, had successful seasons, developed some nice skills, and really showed a lot of sportsmanship and teamwork. Many thanks to our fall coaches. I'd like to call them out. Geneva Sambor, Nancy Stock, Kalen Karcheck, Britt McDonald, Kelsey Mom, Brian Sheehan, John Ramsey, Will Courier, Nick Blake, Deb McManus, and Leah McAuliffe. And as always, they're very committed to their sport and to teaching it and having a lot of fun along the way, which is, you know, really a main goal. And I truly appreciate all of their time and effort, so I know two of you are here tonight, so thank you. Winter season signups, we held about two weeks ago. This is the final week to turn in permission forms for winter sports. Our winter basketball practices will begin next Monday, November 8th. Nordic Ski will be holding an equipment handout day on Saturday, November 13th here at PES, and that will be for some students that may need some equipment. And then wrestling will start after the Thanksgiving break. At this point, all of the November practices are posted on the website, and game events will be coming up soon. In terms of the safety committee, we held another fire drill last week. Our faculty, staff, and students are doing a great job with all of our drills. We may squeeze in one more before the temperatures really start to drop. The InformaCast app, we had tested and went through a couple of testing phases. We found a few kinks in the process, and we're able to work that out, and so the last test that we ran went perfectly. And other than that, our next safety meeting is this week, Wednesday, November 3rd.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to COVID update.
Okay, right now, there are no cases at PES, no staff or student cases that are current. A couple of things in regards to children's vaccines, five through 11. They should be approved by, from what we're getting from the Public Health Network, tomorrow or Wednesday, and there is a flyer that we'll be sending out where they will be available in the local pharmacies. But just to be aware, they did say that Walgreens in Plymouth has the vaccine. As you all know, there is no Walgreens in Plymouth for the vaccine. So I found it, so we had, the teachers are, have been eligible for the boosters. And what I found, that when we've called around to each pharmacy, they all do things a little different, so I just will let parents know to call first before just dropping in because some are much easier to make appointments online than others, and some pharmacies have certain vaccinations like just Pfizer or just Moderna. But DHHS did send something out that we will be sending out. As soon as it gets approved, we'll send it out, but just Walgreens is not in Plymouth, so that won't be available. On November 15th, we will be hosting the vaccine van again. That is for anybody, obviously, within SAU 48 and beyond. We had a great turnout today. I'm not sure we would have been able to manage the five to 11-year-olds with, with all the adults that we had show up today. So that'll be good, that we have that out a couple of weeks. And it's just drop-in. You come with your parents, they sign off the forms, they screen you right there, and then it's just walk-in, walk-out. There's no appointments, no anything. So parents, obviously, will be able to get boosters or vaccinations themselves, too, if they're accompanying their children. So that will be available, and then we'll probably schedule one more if they're available three weeks out, so students that received the, the dose one can have availability for the, for the second dose. But it seems like it's going to be available for anybody who is eligible, has the opportunity to, to get one, and we will certainly help facilitate communication if there needs to be. Other than that, we, you still have the implementation of the mask requirement for clusters and outbreaks. Again, the SAU schools are split on who's requiring and who's, all the time, and who's requiring during a cluster or an outbreak. There is no more fully optional anywhere anymore. It's just, so it's recommended now, but if there's a cluster or outbreak, at least every school has implemented that strategy if there is a cluster or outbreak. I went over what the definitions of those were last month. Is there anything else you want me to report on in COVID that I feel like I've over-reported on it? But that's all I have for right now, so, so hopefully, it's, it's the vaccines that we've been waiting for, for the younger kids, and, and hope that that increases as well.
Can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Because I don't know much about the kids' vaccine. Is it gonna be a two-shot?
Yes.
Than adults was?
From my understanding, it's a third of the dose of the, no, I have a doctor in the building, so a third of the dose of the Pfizer, 21 days part.
Okay, thank you. I like, didn't know anything about it. I knew they were working on it, but.
The other, the other vaccine manufacturers might get approved before next week, even we still don't know.
Yeah.
But I mean, right now.
The nice thing is the vaccine fan, van has all three available for whatever they're eligible, so, and it was fairly easy to, to get that. Any other questions from the board on COVID stuff?
I would just like to say that, you know, if, if we see, you know, let us know if we need to have a special meeting or make a decision about mask policies based on clusters as, you know, as we get into what we typically see as flu season, if we see higher incidences of, of COVID, let us know, and we will make that determination.
Yeah, I was, I had to do that, well, we had, we rescheduled one of our board meetings at the high school to a full board meeting because of the concern there as well. We had significant clusters, well as a subsequent other respiratory something going on where our attendance rate, the kids, a lot of kids and staff were out.
Yeah.
So it becomes a concern when, especially I have a number of staff out, and it's been tough just to support staff, I mean, it's from COVID and, and other factors as well, but there, it's been tough to find subs, bus drivers, lunch, lunch staff, custodians. All of those support staff positions are pretty short. So that's, that's the piece that's really been tough to manage. We've been fine, but it's, it's, you know, administrators covering classes, you know, teachers helping out, and it's been, it's been great because it's so flexible, but it is, it is something that, that has been a barrier this year for sure.
Can I ask, I think about a year ago, we revisited the topic of substitute teacher pay. Are we kind of on par with other districts at this point? Are we above?
So you were, you were, you were, and, and a couple of the other districts popped up for that reason. So the high school did go to $90 a day for, for, I think, that's 90 a day for teachers.
We're at 70. No, it's, did we go to 80?
We're at 80.
I think last year, we went to 80. Do we need to put that on the agenda for next month? Or can we bring that up tonight?
You can, you can move to, to increase that if you wanted to tonight.
I would make a, a motion then to increase substitute teacher pay to $90 per day.
Do you want to increase the support staff, too? Or do you want to talk about the teachers first?
Um, where, I forget where we are with support staff currently.
Don't know if I have that information off the top of my head.
No.
What's that?
They are not the same. I believe they're $10 apart, but I'm not. Is that correct? Correct.
Okay, so I would amend my motion to increase support staff substitute pay to $80 per day.
And the teachers to 90?
Yes.
I checked the math.
Okay. Hold on.
Let's make sure Frank and Mike, I just want to discuss.
Frank and Mike, do you have any discussion things that you'd like to?
Just, is, is the lack of substitutes due, I think we raised, or at least discussed raised before last time because we were losing substitutes out in districts because they were paid substantially better than we were. Is that still the case at $80 a day, or is it, is it not?
Yeah.
Is it, is the, is the lack of substitutes due to low pay, or is it due to just there aren't enough substitute teachers out there?
Both. We have had substitutes go to the higher-paying district if they had an option.
Yeah. Frank, yeah, I don't know if you're.
I would support, I would support the motion. Based on that.
Mike?
Yeah, no, I'm in favor. I, I, I agree.
Okay. All right, so Frank?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Fran?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
And yes for me. So that motion got approved to increase support staff by $10 and substitute teachers by $10.
So 90 and 80, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Fingers crossed that makes a difference for you guys.
A little more incentive, it helps. I don't have anything else on COVID.
Okay.
I could move into the next one?
Yeah.
So we have a slight, well, it's not a slight oversight on the calendar. We put in for an additional day for teachers. So we put them in for 186 days. They need to be at 185. So I'd like to propose that we end school a day early. It's still a half-day. Remember, New Hampshire shifted from 180 days to hours. We've done this in the past. I think it's an easy shift. This way, they still get the day to clean their room out, but I just would propose that we move the last day of school to June 14th. Not that that's gonna be the end. You never know what's gonna happen. What's that?
The union number?
So then, then it gets us to the 185.
185 to the union.
Yeah, that's the teachers, and then the, the kids are. And then the, the kids are, are ours, ours. So that, while I have you on that topic, we are looking at weather days coming up. It is November 1st. I know it's been pretty warm, but it, we were planning on doing the same as last year. Tanya and Kelly will work with the teachers on what's fair and reasonable. But looking at if it's a true snow day, to have a snow day and no school. And then if it's one of those days where it's 32 degrees and freezing rain till 10 o'clock in the morning, I mean, it's just one of those days that maybe you can have a remote day. So kind of doing a little bit of both, not over and in dating. It's not easy to kind of drop and punt on a remote day for teachers. So if we can at least plan for a few, that would be helpful to just shave off some of the days at the end of the year as well. So it's seemed to have worked last year as far as the weather days went. And people seem to appreciate an old fashioned snow day too.
Do they plan to, you know, that they might have two or three days like that so they could have their plans sort of...
Yeah. I mean, it's, yeah, just, I mean, not a cut amount of days, but definitely a few. I mean, it's just some, it's always like everybody psyched for the first few snow days and then after three, it's like, okay, now we're done. So we're looking to do a balance, you know, because it's hard for parents too, to do, to do the same thing, so.
So similar to how it functioned last year?
Correct.
I would think that one of the criteria we might want to consider is that we, you know, days where it's sleeting and freezing rain, travel becomes treacherous, but we also have increased power outages and communication outages.
That would be a no school day.
Those might be good no school days.
Yep. Anytime there's a power outage, flooding, microburst, whatever it might be, where it's just a no, no school.
You've always made those decisions well in the past, and I trust you'll continue to do that.
Yeah, I have a, I have a support team in the wings from the police offices, officers that are up at 4:30 in the morning to the bus company, to road agents from each town that help me out, give me their opinion. What's that?
Do we need to vote?
Nope. It's just something that if you're, if there's consensus, oh, the calendar you need to vote on, yes, please.
I would like to move that we change the last day of school to June 14th so that the teachers are, so that the number of days of instruction are in alignment with the teaching contract. Yeah?
I'll second it.
Second.
Yep.
Okay.
Aye.
Aye.
Mike?
Aye.
I think, I think Mike said, I think he said, I think he said yes.
He said yes.
Yes, I think it was me.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Friends, yes, yes. Okay. Yes for everyone.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The last piece I had, so ESR, sorry for all the acronyms, is the grant, the federal grant funds that you receive for COVID relief. So we have received several, and as part of that, and, and to receive the funds, we need to put out a statement kind of at a public meeting to say, so that's all this is, that Plymouth Elementary School has received a draft allocation of $1,231,677.18 through the ESR III grant. The American Rescue Plan Act includes a third round of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund, ESR III, as well as money for the internet connectivity for schools and libraries, the IDEA grant, and extension of the pandemic EBT food program for students. So it's all kind of encompassing. To learn more about it, you guys have this, this on, statement on your website as well for the public to give input. There's a link to it from the New Hampshire Department of Ed website, a hyperlink. Funds can, funds received can be used during the following years, '21, '22, '22, '23, and '23, '24. Districts receiving funds are required to set aside 20% of the funds to address learning loss. If, if you or anybody has suggestions, there's an email address that we've put on the website. So anybody, any parents, any teachers, any board members, anyone can give input into it, and then we just add that into our grant application. That's all. You don't have to do anything else. It's just, it has to be brought up during, during the meeting.
Thank you.
Yep.
We have some plans for that.
We, you already have most of it allocated towards...
On other business, I do want to ask Tanya, you said that we got the fruit and veggie grant program and that that's something that you wanted to implement, you know, continually. I know that in the past, we've gotten the grant sometimes and then sometimes we don't get the grant. Is that something that we should think about building into the budget for that program? And do you roughly know, you know, like busting it out, or is it...
It's just the state allocation that's given to us based on your free and reduced lunch. Personally, I don't think it's something you can add in. It's a little inconsistent right now because the availability of fresh fruits and vegetables. So that's why the inconsistency in the program. But it's something you can think about.
And I know that the PTA has brought that up in the past, that we had it one year and then we didn't, and then there was a couple of years we didn't have it, and it was a concern for some parents. So I wasn't sure if that was something that, you know, like for our food budget, that we budget for our food, if that was something that could be included in that or not. I didn't know how it worked.
There's, there's pretty restrictive guidelines around distributing fruits and vegetables, which is why we kind of do it through the contractor. But it's definitely something if the board wants to look into something like that. It's, it seems like a given allocation every year, and sometimes they have it, sometimes they don't. It just depends on the funds available.
We could carry a line item in case that, in case we didn't have enough students qualify for free and reduced lunch. Could we not?
You could, but it's just not...
If we didn't spend it, it would just roll over for our...
That's hard to judge.
The award is not based on a consistent number. I think it's just based on how much the state has, and then they take their, you know, certain schools that qualify and just distribute it. Because we just get a letter saying the following schools qualify based on free and reduced lunch.
I will say that we're more and more aware of food in stable homes, and this is a place where they come for food. And we have some faculty members who are very generous with making sure that kids have some food. So I, I think the PTA could work with our faculty in that regard and...
So maybe separate than that, yeah.
So I think that there are some things that we could do through the PTA, through a collaboration of the, of the teachers and the PTA.
Okay. Okay. And I did, before we go into non-public, there was some people that came in after Privilege of the Floor, so I'd like to have a number of Privilege of the Floor, make sure that everyone that arrived had, can speak because he didn't come in time. Is there anyone else that wanted to say anything? Zoom land?
Can I say one more thing?
Yeah.
PTA is on Wednesday at 6:30 P S U. And the website is on, or the link to the Zoom is on the PES website.
Perfect.
Thank you, Donna.
All right. Thank you. All right. Was there anything else?
One thing just to say, I just wanted to thank the school board and our administration for being very thoughtful through COVID. It's challenging. There's no perfect answer, but I am thrilled we have a vaccine coming down the pipe as an option for kids. And I think there is some hope on the end, and the balance that's been pursued, I think, has been excellent. And how we continue to sort of hold off for a little bit more to prevent it from spreading is just really important, but I think we're pretty close to being at that point. I just wanted to commend everybody and the teachers and everybody who sort of weathered this storm because it's been very difficult.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm sorry. Can I ask you?
I'm sorry?
Can I ask you for your name?
Sure. First name is Viking, G I K I N G. Last name is Hector, H I C H E D E R G. Sorry, I didn't say that.
All right. And there's no correspondence or anything else?
I do not have any written correspondence.
Okay. Do you want to make a motion to go into non-public?
Did you want to ask? Did you want to see if anybody wanted to speak from?
Oh, yeah.
I did.
Did anybody want to speak from Zoom? No.
No.
Not that I see.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to go into non-public?
Second.
Okay.